Evening call to order the Town of St. John Plan Commission Study Session for October 1st, 2025. Would invite all that are able to stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Evernathy, can we get the roll call, please?
Justin Nestor.
Present.
Colin Enchway.
Present.
Drago Mestegow.
Present.
Rudy Bambic.
Present.
Russ Vogel.
Present.
John Gill.
Here.
Ashley Evernathy, present.
Billy Manasaplu.
Here.
Adam Decker.
Here.
John Dykstra.
Here.
We are all present and accounted for. Agenda item four, Old and New Business, item A, 2025-20, The Preserve East, request for the primary plat for a 34-unit, single-family, detached subdivision located 1,324.16 feet south of 93rd Avenue in White Oak. Mr. Slager, good evening.
Good evening. Jack Slager with Schilling Development, representing the Preserve. We're here tonight to give you your first look at the Preserve East. This is a 36 and a half acre parcel on the east side of White Oak, lying north of Rosewood Estates. It was originally a 40-acre parcel. We had come in a couple of years ago and developed lots one and two, which both fronted into Rosewood. One of those is built on now, one of them's still vacant, but the remaining parcel is 36 and a half acres, and we're proposing 34 R1 lots. It is currently zoned R1. We're proposing 34 R1 lots, which means they will all be minimum 100 feet wide, minimum 20,000 square feet. Due to the topography, there's some wetlands and floodplain in there. We're basically going to end up with two small neighborhoods. We've got one coming in from the west off of White Oak. There'll be 18 lots with two cul-de-sacs. Then there's a large water body and some wetlands and floodplain in between there. And then we'll have 16 lots on the east side that come in off of 96th Avenue and Acorn. The sanitary sewer is all gravity in this area, and the water lines will all be looped. We are actually tying into some water lines that the town installed, I believe just last year at Acorn and 96th. They did a water main project in there and stubbed out some water mains that will then loop around, and so everything will tie together there. The entrance off White Oak will have acceleration and deceleration lanes. We will be asking for a waiver from the curb and sidewalk along White Oak, and in exchange for that, we would like to construct a bike path that goes completely from the west side to the east side. It shows up as a little black dash line in there, but we basically, yep, there it is, comes right through there, goes across a bridge, and comes back through. So we want to connect the east and west cul-de-sacs, but ultimately, we want to be able to connect all the neighborhoods lying east of here back to White Oak to the bike path that we've constructed along White Oak. And ultimately, really, even the existing Preserve residents that use the bike path can now, could potentially use this new bike path, get into the neighborhoods to the east, and realistically walk or ride their bikes all the way to Prairie West Park without going out to 93rd. So we think that's a nice trade-off. That gives you the connectivity between the neighborhoods. We're also going to provide a sidewalk along the west side of Lot 1 to go from our cul-de-sac over to Rosewood, so Rosewood could also utilize that, the current bike path system. That's basically it in a nutshell. If you had any specific questions on that project, I'd be glad to answer them.
Towns, I saw the staff report.
Yeah, I'm currently in the middle of it. Right now, the only comment slash question I have right now, and Jack, I'm going to pull up in the plan, is you have the bike path kind of crossing here, and then here, and then picking up here, but no ADA crossing on either side of this road to get. Would that be something you guys would be able to do, is get that ADA crossing?
Yeah, absolutely. And we're showing, they should have showed that. We're also showing a crosswalk to get across White Oak, and we were thinking we'd do one similar to what we did outside Continental, where we'd have the little flashing light. I don't, I don't really want to stop traffic on White Oak for this small development. We'd like White Oak to be free-flowing, but we're thinking we'd put the little flashing crossing signal there with the, with the crosswalk across, so.
Okay.
Yep.
That's the only comment I have so far. I'm still going through it, and I have no comments or feedback from public works or public safety at this time.
Okay. Joe, did you have something?
I had it.
Okay. Engineering review?
It just, we just received this recently, and I was out of town, so it's under review.
Okay, under review.
Yeah, we're looking to, this will probably be a spring/summer of next year, so the engineering's been submitted. It's pretty straightforward, but we want to keep the process moving to October and November for approvals.
Doesn't seem too controversial. All right.
Very good. Thank you.
We'll see you back, then. Item B, 2025-21, The Preserve West, request for primary plat for 42-unit, single-family detached subdivision and planned unit development amendment for the Preserve West located on the west side of the existing Preserve, west subdivision north side of 101st Avenue.
Good evening, Jack Slager again, Schilling Development.
Gotcha.
So this will be the final phase of the Preserve. A portion of it was previously platted, and that would be the small cul-de-sac to the north and the section of lots lying north of the lake. That was previously preliminary platted as all of Preserve West. When we platted that section, we had that long street along the north side of the lake called Winterberry Drive, and we just stubbed it to our property line with the anticipation that we would be able to purchase additional property lying west, just like we would stub a road to any vacant property. Since 2021, when that was approved, we have now acquired the additional 15 acres lying west, and so that's the reason for coming in for the amended PUD. We want to add that 15-acre parcel onto the Preserve, and what that does is that enables us to construct a full cul-de-sac at the end of that street rather than just a dead-end stub. So now we have a full cul-de-sac at the end of Winterberry, and picked up eight additional lots on the north end, and then two estate lots on the south side of that 15-acre parcel that will front on 101st. One of them has an existing home on it that will remain, and that will be a five-acre parcel with the, with the home that's there. And then there will be an adjoining three-acre parcel, and all of this will be platted together as Preserve West Unit 3 as the final phase. These are all 90 and 100-foot lots and by 150, and then a bunch of wetlands, floodplain. We ended up with 42, this, this parcel will be 42 lots on 39 acres, so we're right at like basically one unit an acre. Also, we will also have, this final phase will include 2,000 feet of bike path, and again, you can see kind of that black ribbon that goes from north to south along the west side of the lake. Yep, there it is, right there. It goes right through and around, so that'll be a nice amenity for the residents of Preserve West. Other than that, it's pretty straightforward. So I believe we will actually have to do a zone change for the 15 acres to bring it in. It's currently zoned.
Open space.
Open space. So we're going to want to zone that RC1 PUD to match everything else that is the Preserve, and then we'll join that all together for a amended primary plat.
Any other questions, comments?
Nope, this one's still in review. Not as far in this one as I was in the Preserve East, so no, and no feedback on, from public safety or public works at this time, although he did answer one of my questions, which was, is part of this amending the already-approved primary plat?
Yeah.
Anyone else? Questions, comments? Under review?
Under review at engineering, yeah. Well, I was trying to get clarification on the plat, so that has helped. So you are amending the plat, and it's really a new Unit 3.
Yeah, if you look at, if you compare it with the old plat, the section that was there hasn't really changed, but slightly as we, as we go into the new eight lots, they curve the street just a little bit differently, but other than that, it'll be very similar to what.
Was any of the infrastructure put in for the other portion yet?
None of this has infrastructure, other than water and sewer stubbed to the property line, ready to go, yeah. And the, and obviously, the detention pond that was put in years ago, that handles everything, so, yeah.
Yeah, it was more like a regional pond, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Questions, comments? What's your timeline on that one?
We'll be back again next month. Ideally, on this one, we would, our thought might be to move some dirt at the end of this year, put in some pipe over the winter. We'd be looking at lots for spring, early summer for next year.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. We have an add-in for the Grove.
Good evening, Commissioner Rivers. Ed Rectonwell with Old Tough Homes here tonight, representing the Grove. I recognize we're not on the agenda tonight, but we are looking to seek advertising for the PUD known as the Grove and bring it back before the Plan Commission. Our hope was to bring it in for the November 19th meeting, I believe it is, which would be the next public meeting of the Plan Commission. We have worked on a few updates of the concept, well, we have worked on some major updates of the concept plan. I'd be happy to go through, I have some copies if you want to go through it tonight. We actually have, actually was able to put it up here on the screen as well, but this current rendition is 273 single-family lots. 100 of those would be the paired cottage lots. The balance of that 173 are single-family detached lots. Again, the request is going to be for PUD, as we are looking to preserve a significant amount of open space on the project as well. Over 50% of it's going to be preserved for open space due to wetlands, and there's a, the Beaver Dam ditch, Arm is bisecting the property as well. Some of the major changes we've made, we were able to now realign the main entrance with Park Place, so now that's part of the project. That alignment makes the flow on traffic on 101st a little more reasonable with those two intersections aligning. We've also, on our east side, the connection point to Grouse Point will now be through Klein Avenue. We've proposed to install a portion of the Klein Avenue extension, so our eastern connection will tie into that, which will also tie into 96th Place at Grouse Point. So those are some of the bigger changes we've made, and so we'd like to bring this back before the Plan Commission for a public hearing and see if we can get this moving down the path of a rezone hearing again. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. Take any comments.
Ashley, could you zoom in on the typical lot detail? I'm just trying to see what we're looking at here.
Evening, ma'am.
90-foot lot and 75 to 100.
Yes, so there's, there's two different lot standards. So the parrots are 90-foot wide. Those would be divided in half, and then the minimum single-family lot is a 75-foot minimum size, and they go all the way up to 100-foot wide. The lots along the western boundary have retained that 80-foot to 100-foot size, so those have not changed. Lots along 101st have also not changed. Those are also 80-foot. With the realignment of the entrance and reworking some of the interior streets, we did reduce to a 75-foot wide on a few interior lots to make that work a little bit better.
Did you acquire that house right there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that well site still in the plan on the west side, or?
We have not.
Okay. I remember they tested that area for a while.
Who was it testing?
Yeah.
From Towns' perspective?
It was, when it came in to be reviewed, it was considered to be a substantial enough change from the last plan that was presented in front of the Plan Commission for them to get back on the agenda and to appear. Realistically, while there's some similarities to what we previously saw and sent a favorable recommendation on, again, there's significant enough changes for it to appear in front, but it matches, the ordinance is still matching closely the desires of the Plan Commission, the composite siding, the bump outs along 101st, so it's not a flat back along 101st, and the addition of improving this section of Klein is quite beneficial as well.
Yes, many of the actual standards that we talked about previous are included in this project, so.
Maybe I should send those out to the board.
Yeah, just so we had a chance, really a chance to look at it, but, okay.
Yeah.
Yes, the board will get, be in receipt of the PUD guidelines as well as this plan here, well before any public hearing or the next study session.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Maybe we'll digest it and see you back next month for the study session.
Yeah, we could attend the study session in November. Oh, it would be.
November, so.
Do they have to come back in?
So they'll be back in two weeks as a request to publish, and then they'll be on the November 5th study session with the November 19th anticipated public hearing date.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we'll call it Agenda Item D, 2025-22, Unified Development Ordinance.
So this has been a project that I have been working on for a little about, over a year now. When I first started, I spent about a good six weeks looking through, reading, digesting, really involving myself in all of the St. John ordinances that were on the book, just so that I could familiarize myself and better make sure that I was doing the best of my ability to do right by the town. During that review, it came about that the zoning ordinance have not received a substantial update since it was adopted in 2009. The subdivision control ordinance did go up through a thorough update, but it never got updated, so we're still operating on some minor updates that were done in 2020, but again, that, the massive bulk of it was done in 2009. So essentially, what I'm proposing, instead of going through and doing both of them separately and doing two separate ordinance updates, taking all the building and planning regulations and combining them in one unified document, one unified ordinance, this is a way a lot of municipalities, a lot of governing agencies are going, because this way, instead of having to say, find something in your subdivision control ordinance and then cross-reference it with your, your zoning ordinance, and then cross-reference it with your building code, it's all located in one spot. So it makes it easier for the citizens, it makes it easier for your staff, it makes it easier for anybody to find what they're looking for in one area. So some of the most areas of changes to note, there was a revamping and renaming to Chapter 2, which is what I'm going to call the zoning regulations. So, for example, open spaces, now park and open spaces, and instead of it being a lot of words, it's now broken down more into charts and conceptual renderings about kind of what it is that we'd be looking for in the zoning districts. Same thing. The only one that doesn't have that is at public, and that's just because it covers the government quasi-public buildings that we kind of just did, and when it comes to public, there's quite a bit of variable. Residential, there's going to be an estate that you're, you're low-density, this most, this most closely reflects our R1, that's on standard today. It's our suburban, which most closely reflects, R2 with a little bit of R3, and by that, when I'm talking paired cottages, that's it. And with this, when I kind of came up with the lot size requirements, I was looking at best practice standards across the board, and I was also looking at what other municipalities in Indiana are doing. So I wasn't just pulling numbers out of a fictitious fact. This is, a lot of research went into finding this one, and then your general is what's in our R3 today. And again, utilizing those best standard practices for those numbers, again, conceptual renderings for all of them, to just kind of give a conceptual of what it is that we're looking for from individuals when they're coming in. This residential neighborhood conservation helps protect what is already existing. It looks at what is already existing for our larger single-family lots. So a good example is even though their, their PUDs is the Preserve, looking at those lot sizes and providing a conservation for them, so that they don't get into some type of not, illegal, non-conforming, it's, this protects them. This gives them their own jurisdiction and only single-family in these, and, as well as kind of, again, protecting those. Then you get into a neighborhood commercial with kind of what we want their use and types and intensity to be. Once again, district screening requirement, outdoor storage is allowed, provided that it's prohibited, things like that. Thoroughfare, though, this is your highways, your 231, your 41, schematics. Mixed use, this one's a little bit different than something that we've seen. The closest that we have is what is at the back of St. John Commons with the living on top and the commercial on bottom, but there is quite a bit of interest and intent of things going that way. So just providing something for that one, instead of requiring them to go into a planned unit development, giving a direction for it and telling them, this is what you can do, and this is what we want to see in it, versus having to do that back and forth with the planned unit development. Business park is something that we already have, but just updating and modernizing. Same thing with industrial updating, modernizing, redoing PUD standards and overlay districts, just updating and modernizing, modernizing that language there. So that's kind of that big difference there. The use regulations, the big difference is providing a home-based schedule of uses, so that way, if there's a home-based business, they have that ability to have the ability to do some by right, some by special exception, some not at all. But that way, if there's somebody who, say, wants to open, be their own surveyor and work from their house, they're good. They, they have the ability to get that permit. Schedule of uses has remained, majority of, it's still the same. One of the biggest things of note is sports courts would now be permitted in all residential zoning districts instead of special exception as it is today. I let the US 41 and US 231 overlay blink on purpose on those ones. I do want the Plan Commission's feedback about what it is that they really want to see moving forward, going into those corridors, what you want to see by right, what you want to see by special exception, what you don't want to see at all. So I kind of want some feedback from the Plan Commission on those districts, so that way, moving forward with this update, we have now kind of put in what we're seeing, the trends, along those corridors, and making sure that we're kind of moving in that direction. Your next big change is in developmental standards. This one here is something that's a little bit newer. Again, a lot of places are moving forward towards this, and this is something that you might refer to as an in-law suite, or granny flat, something elder cottage. This is where your older people who want to still live on either with their kids, or at their house, or in their community, or they just need that extra assistance, but they don't have the ability to have somebody or want, they still want their privacy, that is something that would then be allowed. And again, putting in that there's specific regulations, supplemental standards, sizes, stuff like that. A change to the accessory structure sizes, this is something that we see a lot of variances on, because right now, you're only allowed up to 160 square feet for your first one, total of 250 square feet. So instead of capping people at that maximum amount, giving it a schedule. So anything less than 10,000 square feet, 400 square feet is what you're allowed. 10,001 to 20,800, 20,001 to an acre, 1,200, and then an acre or greater in 1,600, better defining what those accessory structures are, and then giving a little bit better of ability to detach garages. That way, detached garages aren't always having to come in for a developmental variance, especially on a larger lot, a 20,000-square-foot lot, that they want to build that detached garage. That way, they don't have to keep coming in for that variance. Residential guidelines stayed the same, just kind of updated our anti-monotony example, because it's pretty hard to read. Some updates to the architectural regulations on kind of what those standards are. Landscaping stayed kind of the same, a little bit different. Updating to some type of gardens that are allowed, such as rain gardens, bee gardens, or native planting gardens, saying the minimum of two trees on one property, one in the front, one in the rear. Native trees are highly encouraged. Plantings have biodiversity and commercial. Landscaping required to be installed in the parking lot, landscape islands to reduce heat, heat spots, and then making sure that anything put in is done in accordance to current green infrastructure best practices. NERF C has a really great resource for that. Fences, giving fences their own section instead of them being buried in landscaping is more or less, but it stayed the same, with the exception of allowing for decorative fences in a front yard of a, of a property, provided that it is no more than three and a half feet, and it has to be ornamental aesthetic and enhance the beauty of the subdivision. So it just can't be somebody's putting up a chicken wire and calling it a decorative fence. It has to be a decorative fence. And then on commercial, fences are to be provided for outdoor dining, and then any outdoor dining has to, can be illuminated with string lighting, patio lighting, or other similar lighting provided that meets all other lighting requirements, and that the fence is protected by bollards as required by Indiana Building Code. Lighting, I did have our primary electrical inspector take a look at, and these are kind of recommendations to help update and modernize those. Again, something that hasn't been done since 2009, needed a bit of updating. Parking, instead of having a long parking schedule that's multiple pages long, kind of giving more of a land use category style and a minimum space requirement, and then allowing for a business to request a reduction through a developmental variance, provided that they provide documentation illustrating that that parking will sufficiently meet the needed and necessary parking, so that way, we're not short-cutting somebody's ability to park somewhere. Parking layout stayed the same, and then anything can provide necessary detentions so as to drain all surface area. And the best way to prevent water runoff is an option, such as flow-through painters or permeable pavement or parking spaces. These are things that I have seen done in other municipalities in Indiana when I've gone to training. A really good use right now is Jasper, Indiana, if you ever get a chance to go down there, they've been working on a bunch of redevelopment with their downtown, and instead of having the traditional style of, of pavement, pavement, parking spots, they made it permeable parking as part of their stormwater, so that their main thoroughfare, that their downtown square no longer floods, it just flows through that, through that permeable paving. So that's just an option to provide for people to do that. Not much of changes to supplemental parking regulations. I did have the police and chiefs overlook that. Sign standards pretty much stayed the same. There is a couple that I took out that we no longer see, like marquee signs. We don't really see marquee signs. So things like that did get removed. I did add in electric message board signs. That was something that one of my predecessors had actually worked on with Adam as a recommendation, because a lot of signs now are electronic, and giving them a, a standard instead of, if it comes in, maybe they'll get some type of regulation, maybe they won't. For major, and then one other section, as part of the legislative update, it didn't go, it didn't make it passed, but given that Indiana is well-known as a farming community state, I have no, I, I feel this will come up again, and at one point in time, it will eventually get passed. I'd rather see us look at updating it and having this built in. That way, we're being proactive here instead of reactive and trying to then regulate something that the state then allows. And this is urban agriculture, and this would be allowing for urban farming slash gardening, or, or community gardens or home gardens on somebody's property, and send some specific urban livestocking, livestock slash animal heathenery with very specific regulations on. How many are allowed, what the regulations are, size of buildings required to keep them, items like that. It's all kind of built into there. It's pretty substantial, and I looked at, I want to say at least five other municipalities for how they regulate it before I even put this together. So please take a look at this, and if you have any comments, let me know. Subdivision, because, like I said, there was a massive update to it. I did not do much other than take what had been looked at and just update it. I took out all the technical standards and put it into an append- technical standards and put it into an appendix at the end. So this is more just your subdivision requirements and regulations, your process portion, instead of what the width of the street should be, the depth, the slopes, the, you know, all that technical. It's now an appendix at the end versus built into here. So that way, it's somewhere easier to find instead of having to look through multiple sections of the subdivision ordinance to try and find it. That's that massive change there. Oh, one change I did do is traffic impact studies is a change. Instead of it being at the request of the Plan Commission, and if it meets this threshold, and this is indus transportation, this is indus guideline. This is what indus says, if you meet this threshold, this is what requires that traffic impact study. If it meets this threshold, it's going to require that traffic impact study. So it's no longer if the Plan Commission requests it. If it meets this threshold, it's going to be required. It doesn't matter what the, what somebody says. Flood plane, I did not make any updates to, as we just updated that last year. Similar with stormwater, I did not update that because we did just update that last year. So I will try and flip in front of through those real quick. Because with no updates, I don't think the Plan Commission really wants, needs to go through them again. Chapter 8 is your, what's going to be your application processes and your building permit processes and building code stuff. So this is kind of, all this section here in red is kind of the requirements. This is building in the primary findings of facts for a subdivision, requirements of what's required in a planned unit development document, if a planned unit development comes in front of us. And then application rezone requirements, the documents, finding the facts, and then the applications that are required to appear in front of the BZA. And then site plan has remained the same as it currently appears with just updating, modernizing, same thing with special exceptions and variance requirements. Building permits does typically stay the same. The only major change was instead of having all new home inspections listed out, giving the ability to the building commissioner or duly-appointed official to determine what inspections are needed to be done with each permit. So that if it's a new commercial construction, that typically takes a bit more than a new home, or if it's a shed versus a new home. We don't, we want him to be able to have the ability to say this one only requires a final, or this one requires A to Z, or this one's going to require more because of it being a commercial. Otherwise, same thing with 8.3 here. The electrical inspector did take a look at this and had no updates or minimal updates. Chapter 9 was no changes to what is currently in our ordinance. And then Chapter 10 is just kind of your administration and procedure, kind of goes over the Plan Commission, the BZA, public hearings. Again, our one newspaper 10 days prior to adjacent properties, public hearing, kind of gives a little bit of idea of what it is that I do on a day, what John does on a day, what our floodplain administrator, also John, does on a day, today basis. But although, the floodplain is also something that we did last year. Administrative adjustment allows for minor relief of up to 10%. That's it. Nothing more than 10% could be done by administrative relief. So that means that they could come in and speak with myself or Billy, and if it's within 10%, it can be done by way of minor relief without having to go through a whole process again. But that's giving that, where that minor change or substantial change comes from, gives a little bit of waivers, information for the Plan Commission, appeals, violation enforcement, stormwater enforcement, which is all the same that we already have done. And then the Chapter 11 was an update to modernize that language and then put it more in a thematic A to Z theme. So it's kind of grouped by category. So land use, stormwater, subdivision, it's kind of more grouped versus being an A to Z of everything because then it can start getting conglomerated. And then the last thing again is making that, taking all that technical stuff and putting it into a standards manual or a developmental standards manual, whichever the preference of the title being, instead of just integrated into the ordinance. So overall, that's what I've been working on in my spare time for the past year. Is there any comments or questions from the board at this time? Because I'm sure there's going to be comments, I'm sure there's going to be questions, and I'm sure there's going to be alterations.
I think before I say, before we say anything, we want, I speak for everybody here, really want to applaud you for the effort and the thought that went into this because it really shows that you did a lot of research and that it's pretty amazing. I appreciate the graphics. That's, I think, is something that's always been missing from municipalities' codes, especially when you're, you know, just a person who's never built anything before. So that's amazing, amazing work. I had a couple questions. So in terms of the overlay districts, I noticed that the overlay districts seem to be highways. So how, what is our jurisdiction? What can we do? What can't we do? How does, like, if we were able to, if for our recommendations, how should we be framing it in terms of our ability to, yeah?
So we have the ability to control the zoning and the development that goes on. What we don't have the jurisdiction to do on state highways is we don't have the jurisdiction to give them permits to do a driveway cut or a highway cut, or alter the state road that one requires them to go to, indoting it the appropriate approval from them.
Okay. Very good.
So that's why I said, that's why I left those ones blank, so that we can identify what those uses, what it is that we want to see on those corridors moving forward.
Okay, great. Another question I had was about the new subdivision section. Would you be able to scroll back to that?
Which section?
The, it's literally all red. The new subdivision control.
Oh, the... The urban agriculture?
That one, first off, I just, I loved to begin with. No, it was the regarding what comes in front of the Plan Commission for subdivisions or PUDs.
Okay, okay, okay. I know where you're at now.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
So you're talking about process and procedures?
Precisely.
I need checkery.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's the one that's literally just pages of red. There we go. Yes, okay. Applications. Following items are to appear in front of the Plan Commission rezone, PUDs, subdivision, site plan, and pre-application meetings. So does this apply to literally any PUD that happens within St. John? Rather, the reason I ask is because we've had a couple of PUDs come before us that were part of an annexation or something else and were approved prior to the Town Council and were, you know. So does it apply to those? Does it not apply to those? So?
Would not apply to those ones because what it's applying to is things that are already within the geographical boundaries of the town.
Oh, okay.
Because it deals with things that are already in the town. This is what our ordinance applies to. When it's outside of our jurisdiction, it falls under county zoning jurisdiction.
I see, okay.
So when they're coming in by way of annexation, if it's brought in with a specific zoning, then that just goes through the way of the Town Council, and that's how that annexation ordinance is set, how the annexation laws are set up.
Okay. Thank you for the clarity. I really appreciate it. I have a lot of other comments that are like minor. I can send you a mark to PDF if you'd like.
Yes, please. If you have other comments or questions or concerns or things that you think that need altered or anything, you're welcome to. That's kind of why I wanted to get it in front of you guys, so you guys had the ability to read it, you guys had the ability to write me comments. You can tell me I'm here, or you can, minor ones you can shoot to me in an email. That way, I can make the alterations on my computer.
Fantastic. Thank you. Great work.
Anyone else?
Mine are small, and I could just ask you later on.
Feel free to either, you can come in and see me. I am out of the office tomorrow and Friday. I am helping my dad with the project at home. But otherwise, feel free to come on into the office and see me available most days, Monday through Friday.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, I'll just second kudos for all the work, certainly to streamline it and help the process. Much needed, much appreciated. So, all right, we will get back to you. With nothing else, item 5 adjournment, motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second. One motion, several seconds, all in favor. Aye?
Aye.